Folks, we're going to get rolling here. Sorry for being late. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Lundery Town Council meeting for today, May 17, 2021. We're sorry for being a little tardy. We were at a police awards ceremony out in the courtyard. If you could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. As I just said, we attended a ceremony of police awards and recognition awards of activity that happened in the community. If you sit there and you listen to what our officers do in the community and how they serve the community, I ask that you pray for them and for their safety and for the safety of their families. And it was a very moving experience in listening to what they deal with every day. So for those men and women in blue who serve Lundery, a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, so I have a public comment. I might have an introduction to new police officers when they conclude. Is there anyone else here for a public comment this evening? Yes, Charleston. So just name an address for our records, please.
Absolutely. I remember the drill. Hello, everyone. My name is Charleston Hildanen. I live at 17 Sutton Place, and I am the current president of the Lundery Historical Society. And I'm actually here today just to announce some good news, and that is that the Lundery Historical Society applied for and successfully got the Morrison House, which is located on our museum grounds at 140 Pillsbury Road, onto the State Register of Historic Places. This is the fourth property in Lundery that will be on the State Register of Historic Places, along with the Bethany Chapel, the Grange, and the 1937 terminal up at the airport. To give you a little bit of background on the Morrison House, it was built, we're fairly sure at this point, sometime between 1760 and 1800 on the property that is currently basically where the YMCA is today on the corner of Clark and Rockingham Road. The property belonged to the Morrison family from, so close to remembering the dates by heart, from the 1740s until, from 1738 until 1924. We believe that it was also built on a property where structure existed as early as 1725. The Morissons are significant because they are one of the original charter families who came here in 1719. If you're familiar with our property, the building that got on the register is the little one and a half story red cape. It was moved to the property in 1990, and it's one of the only property, one of the only buildings that's left from that original area of town. So I just wanted to come here and make the announcement. Getting on the state register is important for a couple of reasons. Pragmatically, it allows us to get grants and extra funding for the preservation, repair, and interpretation of the house. And secondly, it also is, more importantly, a point of pride. It lets us gain recognition for the rich history of Lundery. And so I also wanted to come here and thank the people who spearheaded the effort, which is Gail Colglazer, my vice president, Ann Champa, and Dr. David Ellis. They did most of the work in conjunction with a consultant we hired. And I also wanted to thank all of you, because all of you have consistently been supportive of the Lundery Historical Society, and we wouldn't be able to do what we did without your help and assistance. We look forward to holding the Leadership Lundery graduation next month, again this year, and I just wanted to let you all know what was happening and say thank you.
Thank you, Charleston. Any questions?
Great job.
Great job. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Next on their public comment, Chief Hart.
I wanted to take a minute to introduce some of our new employees and those who won awards as Officer of the Year, Civilian of the Year. So with that, from the start, JR Valenti, who's filling my cousin's shoes in building and maintenance. Joanna Fan, who recently graduated from the New Hampshire Police Academy, come on up and say hello. She's strangers now. Sophie Bartlett, who's a new dispatcher. I think she might have, might be almost at the end. Cory Ford, Officer of the Year, outstanding work. And Tom Loy, Civilian of the Year, outstanding work by all. I know you've got a relatively busy schedule tonight. I'll say what I often say at these times. Policing is built on three things: hiring, training, and supervision. And these are outstanding hires that will make this community, which you serve and I serve, proud. So thank you very much for taking the time and encouraging us to come over, and we're glad that COVID is hopefully passing through so that we can do something like this. So unless there are any questions, I will take my leave.
Chief, at the beginning, I stressed what a moving ceremony it was and wanted to thank you and the staff for inviting us.
Well, to be sure, the council is always welcome at our events. I think it's important for the folks who work at the police department to understand the civilian leadership that we serve, representing the people we serve. So thank you very much, and with that, I shall say goodbye.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Ladies and gentlemen, we are in public comment. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address the council? Hi, Marge, name and address for our records, please.
Marge Bedoy, 189 Litchfield Road, Conservation Commission. Just wondering for a quick update on the status of the lawn watering restrictions that we were going to implement at the end of May?
So we're going to get an update tonight. I did receive an email earlier, a couple of days ago, saying that we have moved out of drought, so we're going to discuss what we're going to do about that this evening.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Yes?
As an item of public comment, I wanted to mention that the Water Task Force for the PFAS contamination will be hosting virtually a briefing from DES this Thursday at 6:30 PM. To log on to the meeting, you do that from home, and you can go to the town website to see how to log on, or you can look in the various tentacles we have out in social media for that as well. But it's already been done in a couple of towns. We believe we have over 200 people already registered for that briefing. And for those of you who might be wondering, not only where the contaminants are, but the state will have at the briefing their toxicologists, so we can also discuss the impact of these contaminations if consumed. And I know for many parents, it's especially an issue for their children as to what effect or what impact it might have. So again, it's this Thursday night, the 20th, at 6:30 PM, and I believe the briefing is about a 90-minute briefing.
And Counselor Dolan, if I could just add, we're also going to have it broadcast live on either Channel 21 or 22. Of course, if you watch it on TV, you won't be able to ask any questions, should you have any, but it should be available live and then thereafter on demand.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Lisa. And thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that administrative thing. Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? Seeing none, I have a proclamation. Town of Lundery Proclamation in honor of National Emergency Medical Services Week, May 16 through May 22. Whereas the provision of emergency medical services is a vital public service. Whereas the members of the Lundery Emergency Medical Service Teams are highly trained and ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And wherehas our emergency medical service providers consist of firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, dispatchers, and others. And wherehas the injury prevention and the appropriate use of EMS system helps reduce health care costs. Wherehas access to quality emergency care and medical services has grown to fill the gap of provision of the provision of important out-of-hospital care. Wherehas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Therefore, on the occasion of National EMS Week, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical services providers in Lundery by designating May 16 through the 22nd as Emergency Medical Services Week in the Town of Lundery. Signed on the 17th day of May 2021 at the Town of Lundery, New Hampshire, in the witness thereof and the seal and the signature of the Town of Lundery and its Town Council. Chief, would you and Battalion Chief Heinrich like to say anything?
Thank you, Chairman Farrell. So yes, this week is recognizing Emergency Medical Services Week. I think after the past year we've had, it's definitely worth recognizing. The crews have been through a lot this past year. I think we're finally, hopefully, moving to that next wave where things are getting back to normal a little bit, and everybody's kind of loosening their belts up and taking a deep breath. So this was just something that I wanted to bring Battalion Chief Heinrich with me to recognize all the men and women of our fire department that provide these services every day. Very proud of each and every one of them.
Thank you. Gentlemen, anything from the council? I think it goes without saying, the outstanding services the citizens of this community receive from the Lundery Fire Department, having been on countless scenes and always arriving a little bit after things have calmed down. So it's amazing what our people do, and it's amazing how much they help the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more proclamation. This one got to me a little late. Probably should have read to this one for when the police were here. The Town of Lundery Proclamation in honor of National Police Week and National Peace Officers' Week Memorial Day. Whereas Congress and President John F. Kennedy Jr. signed into law a bill establishing May 15 each year as National Peace Officers' Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. Wherehas there are currently 22,611 names engraved on the National Law Enforcement Officers' Memorial in Washington, DC. And wherehas there are 50 names engraved in the New Hampshire Law Enforcement Officers' Memorial in Concord, New Hampshire. Recognize those in the line of duty deaths of the New Hampshire peace officers dating back to 1886. Wherehas the Lundery Town Council recognized the risks of our officers that take each and every shift in protecting our community, provide them with our sincere support and strongest wishes. Each returns home at the end of every shift. Wherehas the Lundery Town Council, in our capacity as the elected officials for the community, wish to thank the Lundery Police Officers during their special time of recognition by honoring their fellow officers who have given the ultimate sacrifice in the protection of their communities. Now, therefore, the Lundery Town Council recognizes the week of May 9 through the 15th as National Police Week and May 17th as National Police Officers' Memorial Day. Signed this 17th, May 21st, at the Town of Lundery, New Hampshire, in the witness thereof and the seal and the signature of the Town of Lundery and its Town Council. I wanted to say our tremendous gratitude to Lundery Police Department and thank you for your service. Anyone else for public comment? Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to close public comment and move to a public hearing. Public hearing. I need a motion to open the public hearing, please.
A little, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Ordinance 2021-01, an amendment to the zoning ordinance relative to the rezoning of 271 and 275 Nashua Road, map two lots 10-28-10 and 28-11. And there's, hi, Colleen, you're presenting.
Yes. So we do have up on the screen for folks to get oriented. So this is a request to rezone two parcels from AR1 and Route 102 Performance Overlay District to Commercial Two and Route 102 Performance Overlay District. The two parcels are here, 275 Nashua Road, map two lot 28-11 is a 1.15 acre parcel with an existing single-family residence. The second parcel is 271 Nashua Road, map two lot 2810, which is a 4.55 acre parcel with an existing single-family residence and several garages. Both of these parcels are served by a common driveway that actually crosses the abutting Eversource parcel to the west. So the parcels are located on the southerly side of Route 102, immediately east of the Eversource utility lines. The 271 Nashua Road, the larger parcel, was the subject of a complaint to building and code enforcement for a commercial business being operated without proper zoning and site plan approvals. So that prompted the request for rezoning. The initial request that was submitted to the planning department and heard by the planning board of the public hearing had included these two parcels and then also two additional parcels to the east. So these, sorry, the screen is tough to see, but those two additional parcels were part of the original request. And the original request would have rezoned it from AR1 and Performance Overlay District just to Commercial Two. There were some concerns expressed by the public, by staff, just for consistency with the corridor relating to the zoning request and the board during the public hearing in response to concerns that were raised by abutters opted to deliberately remove those two parcels from their recommendation and to make the change to, change to Commercial Two, but to retain the overlay district designation for consistency with other parcels in the corridor. All the other commercial parcels along this section of 102 are within the Route 102 Performance Overlay District. If the rezoning request is approved, the commercial use of the property will still require site plan review and approval by the planning board, and that additional Performance Overlay District does have some additional, more stringent requirements and gives the planning board some additional teeth in reviewing that application. So the planning board did, by a vote of seven to two, make a motion to recommend that the Town Council rezone 271 Nashua Road and 275 Nashua Road as requested. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. The attorney for the applicant is here as well and can speak to any additional concerns, and I'm sure members of the public would like to comment.
Does the council have any questions for Colleen? Yes, Joe?
For the two that voted against it, what were the reasons? Do you remember?
The reasons were because of the feeling that code enforcement should not prompt a rezoning request. It was the feeling that that rezoning something to address code enforcement was not the preference of those two board members. They also acknowledged concerns with wetlands and the proximity to the Ness and Keg.
Ness and Keg, correct.
Brook across the street.
Thank you.
Question. How long was that activity going on, that commercial activity going on?
I would need to defer to, it's been there for quite some time, is my understanding.
Any further questions from the council? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Are there any questions from the public with regards to this application? Yes, sir. Yes, sir, if we can just have your name and address for our records, please.
Dr. Mike Gleason, 19 Mercini Road. My property abuts the property that you're rezoning.
Yes, sir.
I have no problem with, you know, Mr. Tate. He's been a great neighbor, and, you know, he's been doing his business there. We've had no problem with it. However, the zoning change does not follow the owner. It follows the property. And our concern is what's going to happen when he sells? What would move in there? The wetlands do abut our property also. So, you know, what I, what we would like to see as a neighborhood is that he is granted a variance that he could continue doing his business, but keep it as a residential zone.
So to answer your question, if he does sell the property, it will be Zon C2, and whatever is allowed within the C2 district will be allowed on the property?
Right, and that's what we're concerned about.
I understand. If I remember my history, Mr. Tate put in that road or driveway, whatever, long access to his property about 15 years ago.
Correct.
So...
I think, I'm not sure exactly.
Just guessing. Has he been operating that as a commercial property the entire time you've lived there?
No. No. We moved in in 94, and it's only literally, I would say, maybe the last four, five years that we've been actually able to see all the trucks and vehicles up there from our backyards.
Thank you. Is anyone else from the public? Yes, ma'am. Name and address for our records, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I represent Mr. and Mr. Tate, who own the property. And just to make sure the context is correct, I, the commercial activity that's being referred to is really a restoration of antique vehicles and little side jobs in repairing vehicles. Property is primarily used as a residential property. It's the classic example of the home occupation that kind of took off more than you wanted. And as such, it was cited for commercial activity, but it's not the type of commercial activity one would think of where you have a customers coming and going all the time, any kind of creation of traffic. It is very modest, to say the least. But again, it took off more than he had hoped. And with a business like that, there's stuff that gets stored on the site because you do have quite a bit of land. So I just thought it was important for the board to have a little bit of context there on the commercial activity. The goal here is, because he abuts the flea market as well as the public service he's been directly to the west, is to make this legal. He plans to go to the planning board, work with the planning board. He has no objection with the other two lots being removed from the rezoning request. He didn't have any intention of disturbing them anyway. And the site plan approval that he will request will be narrowly tailored for this quasi-almost home occupation. So his use will be cast and approved on a plan. Anybody who would buy the property later, of course, would have to do the same thing if the commercial use were to change in the future. He has no intention of leaving. He intends to make this his little family compound. And I thought that was important for the board to know and to also know that during the site plan process, any concerns about wetland or runoff, anything of that nature, soil disturbance, would be addressed with the planning board specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen, can you come back up for a second? Can you advise the council on what's allowed in C2?
The C2 has a broad variety of uses, limited motor vehicle service station being one, light manufacturing, small-size warehousing, storage, repair services, restaurants, retail. Those are all permitted uses. This is by keeping this in the Performance Overlay District. The Performance Overlay District further reduces what those permitted uses. The underlying uses are only permitted by a conditional use permit, so it wouldn't be a permitted use outright. They would need to go to the planning board and demonstrate that they met the criteria for a conditional use permit. In the overlay districts, the only permitted uses that are permitted by right are very small office, very limited-size retail, limited restaurant space, for example, a restaurant without a drive-through, that type of thing. So keeping that, and that's where the concern, that primary concern of if this was just rezoned just to straight Commercial Two, that would be in conflict with the rest of that commercial corridor where that overlay district provides an additional layer of restriction.
So with that explanation, if it transferred ownership, the new owner would have to go to the planning board for a conditional use permit if they wanted to change the use of the property?
Correct, for the change of use of the property. It wouldn't be permitted outright as to have a warehouse or to have manufacturing. It would need a conditional use permit.
Okay. Yes, Joe.
So say that this zoning change does not happen tonight, what would be left for them? Is that variance possibility?
Yep. So the other options, and we had discussed this upfront, and we had included in our memorandum to the planning board, is that aside from just rezoning as an option, other options would be to apply for a variance for the use or apply for a variance from the home occupation criteria. Automotive repair is prohibited as a home occupation, so it would be a variance for those criteria. Those are both options. The drawback to that is that if it's a home occupation, they get a variance to the special exception criteria to have a home occupation, then there's no additional review in terms of a planning board, stormwater, you know, making sure that other site criteria are met.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the public? If you have a question from the public, please come forward, state your name, and, go ahead, Tom. Colleen, you can step back.
I just wanted to mention, and I offered this comment without...
Sir, you can sit down.
Without prejudice on the issue, approval or not, but the gentleman in the red chair, I don't recall your name.
Gleason, Mike Gleason.
Mr. Gleason's comment... Gleason's comment was well thought out. I've been in this business for quite a while. You can sit down, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I've been in this business quite a while and sometimes we forget when a zoning change is made, just as Mr. Gleason said, that change is married to the property. It's not married to the owner of the property. Owners of properties change, and I've often heard during testimony, well, this is a really great guy, or this is a really nice person, we should help them out as they do their business or whatever. I think what Mr. Gleason said is true. Again, I'm not offering this with support or a lack of support of the request, but I think it's an interesting point for us to remember in a small community like this, when a zoning change is made, it's the property is changed. And whether or not the current owner is a nice person or is doing a good job really shouldn't be part of the, in my view, shouldn't be part of the evaluation of the approval. It should be on the base use of the property and the potential use that the chairman just queried about in that what's allowed in that, in that zone. So I just offer that as a comment. I think Mr. Gleason hit the nail on the head and I wished, I wish that more of our citizens also think like that as they consider their support or lack of support for zoning changes as they might abut their own property.
Thank you. Sir, name and address for our records, please.
Ray Bresen, 3 Gary Drive. And I don't want to labor this. I think, like you said, the gentleman that wants to do something with the property, you know, may be a nice follow-in, he's entitled to do something with the property. My question is this, that it seems though, when we go to have a zoning change, first off, I think it should be looked at is, is it to the value of the citizens of Londonderry or is it strictly a zoning change for the benefit of the property owner? Now, the property owner has the property. He has a right to use it for a particular purpose. And if he's just doing a little bit of repair of vehicles, I heard the lady that spoke before representing him said it kind of got a little out of hand. Well, sometimes you need to, how far do you want to go with thing? Is it a commercial operation or is it just something, a hobby thing? Is it necessary to do a zoning change or perhaps maybe some other way of handling it? The other concern is it is a high piece of property, which means it's a watershed. It's a watershed to Nesbrook Brook, I'm not sure how you pronounce that, but whatever. So all of these things should be taken into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
In response to Dr. Gleason, he asked a simple question. Can that property stay residential and can a agreement with the town and the current property owner allow that to continue? We need to answer that question either yes or no.
I think, I think we did. That was the question I had, actually.
Yeah, that could be done through an application to the ZBA for a variance from the special exception criteria for a home occupation. So that would be, there's not an agreement. It doesn't comply with zoning. It would need a variance. That's the other route that they could take.
Yeah. And a question, did the planning board members discuss that option?
It was in their staff memorandum and was clear to them. I don't believe that there was a lengthy discussion of that. It was an option they were aware of.
Yes, sir.
Colleen, should the property owner seek a variance and the ZBA denies a variance? They still have the option to come for a zoning change?
Yes.
Thank you, Colleen. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, name and address again, please. It makes it easier for us to take a minute.
Sure. Patricia Pansyaco, I live in Auburn, so I don't live in Londonderry. Do you still want my address? 392.
It's the way we have to keep minutes.
Okay. 392 Spofford Road in Auburn, New Hampshire.
Thank you very much.
I hear what's being said and I very much understand where this is coming from. And I think one little piece of information that we haven't touched upon tonight is how the surrounding properties are zoned. Immediately next door, he abuts that public service easement. Then you've got C2 where the flea market is, and then you're into Hudson. And there's all kinds of businesses already within eye shot of this property. In fact, this property is at least 30 feet approximately higher than the elevation of Route 102. Also, directly across the street, you have a mix of C1 and C2. The choice to go with the rezoning was not taken lightly. And we did look into it a little bit deeply, actually, historically. And this area of town, from what we've learned from a prior master plan than you have now, it had been identified as an area to have all commercial zoning go up and down 102 on both sides under the Performance Overlay. And as the council knows, the Performance Overlay gives the planning board an added layer of control over what goes on up there. And what is shown on the plan is the limit of what you can do unless you come back to the planning board. So we didn't choose the rezoning as the simpler way to come out and do this. There is more oversight. There is more control over stormwater runoff. It's a longer permitting process. In addition to that, Mr. Tate and Mr. Tate do not have any objection to the other two lots remaining as they sit today as AR1. He's not asking to develop that. He's just trying to make what's kind of happened okay with the town. He has no plans right now to develop those. And those would only be allowed, developed for allowed uses in the agricultural zone. Actually leaving those two lots as they are acts as a buffer between this property, which is probably, I mean, just call it commercial, it conjures up something far busier than what's taking place here. So those lots will remain a buffer. They're very steep, they're heavily wooded, and as I said, these are quite a bit higher. You really can't even see what's going on up there as you drive by. And like I said, across the street, it is already zoned commercial. So that was the reasoning primarily because of the abutting properties and how they're zoned, why we chose to go this route as opposed to going for a variance. But if, it's up to the council, of course. We feel as though there'll be far better control over this use going this route.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? Name and address for our records, please.
Hi, my name is Julie Christensen Collins. I live at 23 Rosini Road in Londonderry. So I'm one of the abutters in the neighborhood. And we all own property that directly abuts this property, everybody in the neighborhood. So I just, I guess, you know, I do echo the concerns of my neighbor, Dr. Gleason, and in terms of what, if this property were rezoned, what it could mean for the future. And I guess I'm not, I'm concerned because I'm not clear what controls there would be over some of these things like, you know, like manufacturing or different things. I hear the representing attorney, but that property is very close to the neighborhood and you can certainly see it through, through the woods from, from the neighborhood itself. So, thank you.
So why don't we do this one more time? We'll just make sure we get all your questions in. Colleen, can you come back up again?
Thank you.
So Colleen's our planner. She's going to answer your question.
Okay.
You know, I want to make sure you're, you're an abutter, I want to make sure you're comfortable.
So the, in terms of what the use would be permitted, so in order for them to go through the site plan process, have, they need a conditional use permit through which we have very specific criteria in the ordinance. It's not as stringent as a variance where you have five criteria of the law, but there are criteria that they're looking at that are specific to that particular use and needing to document how many vehicle trips are coming per day, how many autos is he working on, how is he disposing of, of material? All of those things are needing to be presented to the planning board and approved as part of the approval for the use to even be permitted. Once that use is permitted, there's also, and it can be done simultaneously at the same time, but there's also a site plan process where they're documenting physically where is the garage that this is located and where's the parking for the garage, going through and if there's an impervious area, how they're accommodating that for stormwater controls. So there is those additional reviews that would not necessarily be part of something that would be reviewed if this was a home occupation. But I do understand and we do know the concern of you're rezoning, you are rezoning it to allow things that are all permitted, but that conditional use permit for the use does give some real stringent criteria. For example, if they had a conditional use permit that said they're only restoring vehicles and the planning board wanted to put restrictions on it as far as the number of vehicles, the hours of operation, the days of week, planning board can put all that and put that into that conditional use permit and say that this use is only permitted when you meet these criteria. And if they, a future owner comes along and says, well, I was only permitted five days a week, now I want to operate seven days a week. No, that needs to come back and be an amendment to the conditional use permit. They would need to document that the expanded operation still meets those criteria. So there is some control. It's still, it opens up and allows some commercial uses, but there is still some control for the planning board in their review.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I bring it back to the council? Okay. It was a pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I just want to make sure everybody understands that there is a process that we, that we go through here. I mean, our zoning regulations are clear. They are specific for a reason. You know, somebody goes against those, those zoning rules and kind of starts something up that turns into something that they didn't realize, that's not a reason why we should change the zoning ordinance. You know, we have a process in place. We've talked about home occupations. We've talked about a variance. I feel very comfortable, I was on the zoning board of adjustments, there's five criteria as we've heard earlier. That's very stringent. And that would be a good test model, I think, to kind of put that through this. You know, those folks that spoke tonight, the residency abutters, they purchased this property thinking, their property, thinking it was going to be residential. And for us to swoop in and change that, I think is a very big oversight on our part. I think, again, I think changing it to a commercial property is just a bit extreme and I just wanted to make sure you guys knew how I felt.
Anyone else?
I agree with Joe. Joe, I say we send it to the ZBA, let it go through the process. And then if it doesn't meet it, then it comes back to us and we have to make a, we have to make a decision. Or no decision.
These guys.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. I would say that if we're, I would be nervous about relying on the Performance Overlay District rules for forever. Having been here when we did that, we did the Performance Overlay District as a developmental tool to slow development and to allow the town to get control of and understand the upcoming development. I was in favor of it then. I would say right now, if it was to come before us to, to step back from the POD, I would probably be supportive of that. That was 20 years ago and I think maybe the time has come for us to maybe relook at that. And I'm not offering that as direction, just saying that if it were to come up. So the context of that is if we think of the Performance Overlay District as the perpetual control for this piece of property, I think that may be a mistake because I believe the Performance Overlay District may not live a very long life. That's going to be up to this council or a future council to make that final decision. But it was a development tool used about 20 years ago. And I would agree with the, with the doctor that we, as I said earlier, we need to consider zoning changes very seriously because they are permanent unless, again, a new zoning change comes in. So it would be my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, that we table this ordinance and, and leave it on the table and only reconsider it if the, if a request for a variance is denied by the ZBA and then we can revisit the issue.
Okay. And just for the folks who spoke this evening and everything, as one of the authors of the Performance Overlay District, as I sat on the planning board 20 years ago, I didn't realize it was that long ago. It was done as a tool, basically Home Depot came to town and Hannaford came to town at the same time and we said, whoa, slow down here, let's figure out what we're doing. And which is we wound up with what we have today. I can, I can empathize with what the, what the homeowner is trying to do. I do agree with tabling the ordinance and then bringing it back here, but do understand something. You came here and you spoke this evening. The zoning board of adjustment is a different process. It's a quasi judicial system. They will come and they will post this. They will come and they will ask, are you in favor or are you not in favor? Are you, you know, and state your, your reasons. You need to participate in that process if you want to continue, if that's what you would prefer to see. And let the, and let the, we call it the ZBA, please let them know what you think. So with that, I'll accept the motion to table.
So, Mr. Chairman?
A second. Who was in favor, just come by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. We're going to table this until it goes through the ZBA process. If it does not complete the ZBA process or is denied in the ZBA process, we'll be happy to reopen. This hearing is still open and we'll, and we'll come back here and have the discussion again. Okay, everybody?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, point of order.
Yes.
Just for information from the public, the council has no role with the ZBA except to appoint ZBA members. From an influence standpoint, we will, none of us will be calling the ZBA or meeting with the ZBA to try to convince them to rule one way or the other. That's an independent quasi judicial process.
Thank you. All right, we are still in public hearing. I'm going to move to resolution 2021-10, a resolution relative to the adoption of exit 4A area TIF district. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As was explained to the council during the first reading of this resolution, this would create a TIF district, the town's third such TIF district, this time in the area of where exit 4A will be constructed, which is on the east side of I-93, on land that is primarily owned by Woodmont Commons or, who also goes by Pillsbury Realty. The similarities to Pettingill Road are many. It's a raw piece of land. It's going to have a state-built piece of infrastructure going through it in the way of exit 4A. And this would simply be a development tool to help further spur development in that particular area. As it, as I mentioned, it is a raw piece of land, meaning it does not have any current infrastructure in the way of sewer, water, or gas. The map that has been provided to you of where the lots are that would cover the TIF district are at the end of the resolution. I just want to note one item that's been brought to my attention. Down at the bottom of the map, there's one parcel that's highlighted and it says, map one lot 61, should read lot 62. And that correction will be made on the map, provided the resolution passes. So the highlighted parcel is correct, but the lot number should be 62 and not 61. The Rockingham County Commissioners have been made aware of this, as is required by statute. And also the Londonderry School Board has been made aware of this as well and has given time to comment on it.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Yes.
Kevin, when you just said about the school board, what, did they approve it or just, I didn't hear your answer. I'm so sorry.
It's not that they have to approve or disapprove. They have to simply be noticed that the town is considering this. And so they were given the opportunity. the opportunity to ask questions. I attended their school board meeting, their last school board meeting at the beginning of May, and there were maybe less than a half dozen or so questions that were asked at the time.
So can I ask what the tone was, what kind of questions they were asking? Like, what was their concern? Like, what was their overall take on the TIF? Because I didn't see that school board meeting.
Yeah, I mean, they didn't seem to, from my perception, they didn't seem to have many concerns. I think they saw the benefit of what Pettingill Road produced when we had the TIFs there. There were more questions about the mechanism of how a TIF works in terms of retaining the base amount value that's existing on the land. But again, my perception of that meeting is that there weren't many concerns and that they were fine with the council moving forward on it.
So their only concern was the mechanisms and how it worked and how, okay.
That's what I took away.
I'm sorry?
I said that was my takeaway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're in public hearing. Is anyone any questions on this particular resolution? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for our records, please.
Richard Balinski, 89 Hall Road. I have a few concerns with this. As you're aware, you know that I'm not a big proponent of these TIF districts because basically all they are is welfare for the rich. That's what it comes down to. The exact land will have to be, is going to be developed. It's owned by Pillsbury, and I'm assuming that this Hayracks Dairy Partners, is that part of Pillsbury?
That's correct.
So other than like three acres, they own all this. When they came into town, they said they had the money to develop this in Woodmont. So why are we putting any taxpayer money into this? If this was a housing development and it needed sewer and it needed water or whatever utilities, they put them in. That's part of their development costs. Then they hand it over to the town in perpetuity once it's built to town standards, and we take care of it from there on in. I don't understand why we keep putting taxpayers' money into private development. Now, they own the land, they can develop it, that's theirs to do what they want. The other thing is, do we have a list of what we consider infrastructure? Because I can tell you, up at Pettingill, I was up there one day, and Yanis was up there with, I think it was three, maybe four of the highway department workers, putting up the Pettingill industrial sign. And I asked him, "Who paid for that?" He says, "Well, it came from the TIF." That's not infrastructure. Why is the taxpayer paying for that? If the developer doesn't think he has the money to develop this, then make sure that you get a performance bond from him before he starts developing it. That's going to develop. It's on 93. Once that exits there, that's going to develop. It's the same thing that happened up at Pettingill. Pettingill did not develop because of the TIF district. Pettingill Road developed because of the US government putting the bridge and the access road into the airport. That's why that land developed. That's why it sat there for 20, 30 years I was in town before it started developing because there was no access to it. That was one of the pushes that was put on, some of you may remember this, 20 years ago when we had all those potentials coming over from Exit 5A, from Exit 5, to go in there to make it accessible. Does the TIF district help? It helps the developer because he doesn't have to pay for it. The taxpayer does. I think you need to look long and hard to sit there and say that, "Well, it's not, the taxpayer didn't..." They did. That's money that didn't make it into the coffers. It's going to develop. It's right on 93. It's going to have an exit there. Shouldn't even consider this until we have a list of what we consider infrastructure because that's very open if you don't have a list that states, "This is what we will Performance bond, I went over that. That way, if he doesn't do it in a timely fashion, you're covered. Went over the Pettingill didn't really take off because of the TIF. That came off, took off because of the federal government putting the access road in. I think we all know that. So that's my main thing. So you're taking, again, you're going to take from the taxpayers. That will develop. It's on 93. It's going to have an exit. It doesn't need any incentives. Let the developer put in the infrastructure to the town's standards as he's required to do, and then he has the choice. He either turns them over to the town in perpetuity, we take care of it from there, or if he doesn't, then he has to take care of it. He's not going to do that. So that's what I have to say. Once again, it's nothing more than corporate welfare for the rich.
Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, we're in public comment. Is anyone else who would like to comment on this particular resolution? Yes, sir.
Ray Brezlin through Gary Drive. Couple of things. The TIF district, we did that up the airport. Now, we've kind of opened it up to any other developer wants to have a TIF district because we did that, I think. That being said, this Exit 4A deal, we don't even know what the cost of this is. Well, wait a minute. This is all federal money. It's free money, it's coming from somewhere. Really? We have a right to know what the cost of this is, whether the taxpayers of Londonderry are paying for it or not. It went from $56 million to $96 million to $130 million, and now, when I ask the question, "What is the current cost?", the answer I get is, "Well, we're still working on it." Really? I think we have a right to know. Is this, in fact, going to be a benefit to the town of Londonderry? Is this going to be a big tax benefit to the town of Londonderry? I would like to know. Wait a minute, they're already proceeding with this. They bought the property along, what is that, North Main Street? Okay? They've already bought the property. Now they've got surveyors out there surveying where the sewerage is, where the water is. Why has that not already been done before they approve this thing? I'm getting a little off track because, wait a minute, I'm talking about Exit 4A. This Exit 4A is going right through this property. It's going to open up this property to the developer, and now we're going to bend over backwards apparently and open up a TIF district for them. Really? I think we need to ask the question, "How is this a benefit to the taxpayers of Londonderry?" Thank you.
I was at the presentation that Kevin did at the school board, and, which I thought was a fabulous presentation because I knew nothing about what a TIF district was. And then I came out of it feeling as though I really understood what it was. It's my understanding that they end up paying us back over a period of time, or did I misunderstand? They end up paying, the people who put the businesses in there end up paying us back over a period of time for the infrastructure that we put in. Is that correct?
It actually works the opposite. So we reimburse them. They front the cost.
Okay, they front it and we reimburse. So if they front it, it's not the taxpayers' money in the beginning, and then we're reimbursing them, but in the meantime, we're collecting taxes from them. Is that correct after they're done?
Correct. So once they're reimbursed and paid back the amount we've agreed to, we still collect the tax dollars from them.
So in the, and it's over a period of how many years they pay us back? Or we pay them back?
It depends. It depends in the development agreement, whatever the amount is that we've agreed to to pay back. It depends on how much we're getting in in tax revenue against how much we said we would reimburse them. In the first two TIFs that we had, I think the longest payback period was maybe two and a half years.
So after that two and a half years, because we're getting the tax dollars, business tax dollars from some of these big places, and it's my understanding you said you had people already saying to you, gee, is there, I mean, we're right over the border. And I just see it as a win-win if we can collect big taxes from something in a short period of time. I mean, two and a half years is nothing, and then you're correct. So someone who knew nothing about it felt as though I knew something about it, and I saw it as a potential, maybe not a win-win tomorrow, but certainly within five years a win-win for the community. And we need to do something about the taxes, so that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, Tom.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The way I look at it is, what happens with the TIF district is, Mr. Balinski is correct in that through serendipity, the development will happen without TIF district. It just will take longer, a longer time on the calendar. So what the TIF district does, it compresses and accelerates the calendar. So if you have, just to make the numbers easy to process through your head, thinking about what happened at Pettingill. So if the development was going to take, if you think of year zero as now and think of year five as when the development would be complete and when you can start collecting the full amount of taxes, let's say the taxes are a million dollars a year, let's just say. There are a lot more than that. Let's just say, just for easy calculation. So if we can collect a million dollars in year five after the development took place over those five years, what the TIF district does is it compresses those five years to say that with the help of the community, we contribute some amount of money so we can start collecting that million dollars a year in taxes, maybe in year three instead of year five. It speeds things up. So in the end, when you're done with year five and you go back and look in history, you've collected a million dollars in year three, year four, and year five. So you've collected $3 million across those three years, whereas without the TIF district, you would have started collecting your million dollars in year five. So the town has collected two more million dollars a year on the same development because you've compressed the calendar, you've moved, you've pulled things in, so you start collecting earlier. So if you contributed half a million dollars to the project, if the town put a half a million dollars in, but by compressing the calendar, you get two additional million dollars, years three and four, then you can do the math, you're a million and a half ahead of the game. So the town and the school district, because we share these revenues, get a million and a half extra dollars, whereas if they, if we stayed out of it and let serendipity take its route and let the development happen on its own, and we start collecting that million dollars in year five, you see where we have foregone a million and a half dollars that we could have had if we had made that investment in the TIF district. So it accelerates the collection of taxes. It doesn't make the taxes be more, but when you tally it all up at the end of X in the future, you can see where the additional revenue is present. And that's how the TIF district works, and that's the intent of it.
Anything further from the council?
I have a few questions, Kevin, if you don't mind, just because of what people were saying.
Sure.
So we kind of lend this money to the developer or whatever, to put in this infrastructure.
No, there's no lending.
So we just pay for it?
They pay for it.
They pay for it.
We reimburse.
Say it one more time.
So they pay for the initial infrastructure. The way the development agreements have been structured previously is they agreed to pay for the infrastructure upfront. Then upon certificate of occupancy, we agreed to reimburse them with the tax revenue that we're collecting from them now that they're there.
Okay. So I guess, when Richard was saying this, you know, what is it that we, what are the things that we as a town are willing to accept as?
Sure.
I mean, is there a sheet that says?
Yeah, so.
This, 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 this?
Yep. So on, as part of the resolution, we had to come up with the Infrastructure District Development Plan, which is a part of it. And you'll see there, it says, let's see, "Statement of Public Facilities to Be Constructed." So it says, "The facilities to be constructed may be, but are not limited to publicly-owned infrastructure such as roads, right-of-way sewer systems, drainage, and other related uses. Additional facilities may include those allowed under RSA 162 K63." So if you go to that in the RSAs, it then further goes on to say, "In conformity with the development program, the district, within the district, the municipality may, A, acquire, construct, reconstruct, improve, alter, extend, operate, maintain, or promote developments aimed at improving the physical facilities, quality of life, and quality of transportation." It goes on to talk about the use of public parking structures, there's installing lighting systems, street signs, street furniture landscaping, and so on. So that's your guidelines, if you will. What we would do, though, is we would have a specific development agreement with the developer there that specifically would spell out what those public infrastructure things are going to be that we agree to reimburse. That development agreement will also come before the town council, before it's ever signed.
Okay, so it's a public document?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
They're all public documents.
Okay. The other thing, so what is not accepted? Is there anything that's not accepted from this that, like, you know, you say, "Whoa, we won't..."
Any private property.
But this is private property.
No, this, it'll have to be public infrastructure. So anything that is reimbursed through the tax dollars is public infrastructure. Like a street light or road. Now, that isn't to say, that isn't to also say you can't have, again, an agreement with a developer to say, "This is, we'll own it as public infrastructure, but you're going to provide the maintenance on whatever the thing is that we're agreeing to reimburse on." But it becomes accepted as public infrastructure.
Yeah, like I said at the last meeting, where I struggle is the public-private entity of it.
You know, for instance, right now, the existing roadways within Woodmont, they're not built to town standards. And because they're not built to town standards, we don't accept them as public roadways. So they're private roadways maintained by the developer, plowed, whatever.
So will these roads be built to our?
They'll be built to standards that we agree to, that the town agrees to.
So separate from their master plan, then? Does that have to get their master plan redone? Because it, I'm sorry, I'm so confused with it.
Oh, that's okay.
I don't, it's the public-private thing that I struggle with.
The master plan wouldn't need to be redone again. These things would be worked out through the development agreement that we develop.
Okay, so then we would have to be responsible, then, for plowing that section of Woodmont where we're not responsible for plowing the other part of Woodmont?
Possibly, but not necessarily. Again, you can have an agreement with the developer, a maintenance agreement, if you will.
Okay.
That, even though it's a public roadway, would have to be maintained by the private developer.
And can we put time parameters on this? Like, the developer has a timeframe in which it has to, like, it has to, they have to pay us back.
I mean, the council.
In other words, you know, not to exceed six years, you know, to pay us back or something like that.
Well, again, they're not paying us back.
I mean.
We're paying them back.
That's what I mean. Is there a timeframe? Like, do we have to pay it back in a certain?
So they have to, in order for any payments to come from us, they need to get a CIA. So if they're not done, and they haven't put all their money up front and done all their work, they're not getting a CIA.
Right, I know what it is, but...
Okay. So we're not going to give them any money if they don't complete the project.
So that makes them move the project quicker, correct?
That's the trigger point. Yep, for them, absolutely.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't understand this that well.
It's completely fine. We've done two of these, they're... It's completely fine. We, we've done two of these, they're, they're very complicated, and we have a third development agreement with Woodmont, which is a different kind of agreement, which is a lot more complicated.
Right.
And the thing, I, I think it's important to note, in that development agreement John's talking about, it was, it was contemplated in that, that there could be a TIF district. If you read through that development agreement, which was signed in 2013, it talks about a TIF district, you know, at some point for Woodmont.
And then we put in that other thing, and I'm hoping Tom will update us later on, that housing, re-author, uh, housing?
Yep.
And re, because that's supposed to go there, and that's supposed to, with not taxpayer money, their own money?
Yep.
Fund things over there, correct?
It's another development tool. Yep.
Okay.
Yes, Tom?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Deb, the, the question you had about the, who's gonna pay for the snow plowing and so forth and when the roads, the, the taxes that we collect from the new, the new property owner, the eventual property owners, those taxes will go to pay for things like snow plowing and, and trash pickup and stuff like that. Now, and if, for some reason, uh, when we do the math, if the amount of taxes being paid doesn't cover those things, the development agreement says the developers have to kick in the extra money, they have to make it tax neutral, so that Londonderry taxpayers aren't stuck with the bill.
Well, see, and I'm worried, because, just taking a step further, right? That we did all, we bent all these rules, we created this whole mini-master plan with different special exceptions and things for them to develop in there, right? Because they were gonna maintain everything within there, their own security, their own plowing, their own trash pickup. And now it seems to be evolving, um, you know, that we gave you this, and now we're giving you this, and that's, now we're gonna be paying for those roads. I don't know. I mean, I understand the tax thing, I just, I feel like that whole, maybe that whole thing needs to be revisited.
Well, when you, when you say we'll be paying for those things, remember, the, we, we have the finance director here, but the, the expenditures have, it's a two-way street. You have revenues coming in?
Mm-hmm.
And expenses going out. Now, with regard to Woodmont, the expenses going out can never exceed the revenues coming in. That's a special agreement that gives the people of Londonderry, the taxpayers of Londonderry, the ability to sleep well at night, because they know that, that Woodmont is never gonna cost them their, their tax money in excess of what the revenue coming in is. So if, if it, if it costs $200,000 to plow those roads every year, there has to be $200,000 worth of revenue coming in to pay for that, or the developer has to pay us extra.
And, and that's good, and I'm all for it. I'm, I'm getting tired of seeing miles of dirt. I wanna see some buildings going in, more buildings going in, I should say. I just wanted that to be really specific, and we will see those documents.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
All contractual agreements have to be approved by the council.
But they will be, like, out in the open, so if somebody wanted to say something?
Everything is in.
Okay. I ju, I just, there's a re, I get questions asked by a lot of people, and I just wanna make sure that I'm.
All the existing development agreements are, are public documents.
Anything further from the council? Coming back to the public. Yes, sir?
Richard Bolinski, 89 Hall Road. Uh, just a couple of comments on what Tom had said. Tom could be right, Tom could not be right, but quite frankly, whatever we paid for that TIF district is not why it developed, is not why it was built as fa, you know, at the speed it was built. It was built because, again, the road over from the, from the highway, the bridge, the foreign trade zone that it's, it's in, those people needed land that size, they needed to be next to an airport, that's why it developed. To try to say that the TIF district is what did it is really disingenuine. It doesn't hurt, because whatever you pay back to the developers, that much more in profit in his pocket. Same thing's gonna happen over at Exit 4A. That land is going to develop. It's gonna develop because it's on 93, it's gonna have an exit, and there's not much land left in southern, southern New Hampshire. Look at Tuscan Village. They close up the, you know, they close up the track, and it's all developed, or in the process thereof. So putting in a TIF, TIF district is not gonna be what develops this. It's not gonna cut it from five years to two years. You're either gonna have people that are interested because of where it is, just like they were up at the airport. Anybody that's in real estate could tell you that land sat there for 30 years, because there was no way to get to it. And as soon as that was announced, and they started that road over from Exit, from Route 3 and the bridge, is when that, everybody got interested in. Why? Access. Location, location, location. It's the same where Woodmont's gonna be. It's gonna develop. Could the TIF save six months of development time? Yeah, it's possible. It might save a year. It might save nothing. It's not the major contributor. All you're doing, again, is corporate welfare, putting money in the pocket of a rich developer. That's what it comes down to. And I don't know why they keep trying to sell it as anything other. John Stossel just did a, an editorial in the paper this past weekend about this. Not Londonderry, but in general. Billionaire football owners, team owners, getting 750 million from the city, when they could build it themselves. This is the same thing. He has the right to develop, I got no issue with that. He can put whatever the zoning allows in there, I've got no issue with that. My issue is having the taxpayer pay for it, or, or a portion of it. I don't want anybody to think we're paying for it all, because we're not. It's just not right. And it's unnecessary where this land is. And you guys know it. So if you wanna give this guy, you know, if you wanna give this guy more money, more profit on the taxpayer, I get you, you're gonna do it anyway. I know you will, because that's how you do things around here.
Okay, is anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir?
Red Cross in 3, Gary Drive. Uh, once again, we're, we're hearing about a timeline, two and a half years, something. Uh, this, this is going to be controlled by the movement of Exit 4A, which is, you know, we, we know that's gonna go. Personally, I think it's a very bad idea. I think I've said that before. It's supposedly gonna decrease traffic into the town of Derry, which is not. It's gonna make it much worse. But, uh, this is gonna be controlled by the schedule of Exit 4A, okay? Which we have really, even if they start it tomorrow, it's probably gonna take six years, or who knows? Who knows if there's gonna be enough money to even fix it? Uh, the first part of it is going to put Exit 4A into, uh, Woodmont's property, or, you know, Derry Partners, or whoever it is there. It's gonna open up their property, okay? It's gonna help them out. And now, we gotta help them out further? Wait a minute, the tax money is gonna come back when the property is developed and, wait a minute, has been sold to whoever's going to buy it. Who's gonna move in there with a business? Whether it's a hamburger place, a hotel, a hospital, whatever's gonna go in there. Uh, we're not gonna see that tax money back, I think, wait a minute, I could be wrong, until the property is then occupied. That's when we, now, and that's not, only gonna happen all at once. Uh, wait a minute, let's look at, uh, Woodmont, uh, on the west side here. Uh, we've been waiting for that to be, uh, occupied and developed. Uh, some of it's happened, some of it has not happened, because, wait a minute, we gotta get somebody to come in and decide they're gonna build there. It, you know, uh, because Woodmont is not going to build the properties and then, um, take them over, or sell them, whatever. They have to get investment to come in to build. Now, some of that's happening, some has already happened. So, now we're talking about over on the east side. I, I'm not sure why we, we feel we have to do this, this TIF district, uh, because the developer asked us to do it. Where is our infrastructure here in the town of Londonderry? Where's our water and sewer? That's what we should be concerned with, not putting infrastructure in over in the east side of undeveloped piece of property. We need to think about, where's our infrastructure here? We're, uh, we're approving development in this town when we don't have our infrastructure, our water and sewer in place. That's a problem. We need to break out our master plan, open it up, and see where it's at. We need to revise it. The master plan is a guide for the town. It's a vision. It, everything in there, we're not gonna do. We have to decide what the priorities are. The priorities are water and sewer. We got a problem in this town with contamination. It's a big problem. It's not going away. Are we gonna spend $100 million, $200 million, $300 million to put in water and sewer to everybody in town? We're gonna rip up all the towns, roads? Where's our plan? We need to be thinking about the infrastructure in the town of Londonderry here, before we think about helping out a developer with a TIF fund. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, folks, what's your pleasure? So, all right, just for some clarification purposes, um, the TIF district that was, uh, the TIF districts that have been entertained and approved here in the town of Londonderry are unlike any others in the state. There's a lot of towns who leave the district, districts open for many years, and they move through the process at a much slower pace. What the council's put in place in the past is, is to move them as fast as possible to get revenue to the bottom line. In the example of FW Web, some of us sat in the me, the meeting room with the chief operating officer. It came down to picking between Nashua and Londonderry. By invoking the TIF, we now have a owner here that has a $57 million facility. They were close to signing papers in Nashua. They now pay us $1.2 million a year in taxes. FW Web has a reputation of staying in their buildings 40 to 50 years. So for investment, we now have $50 million in taxes that would be coming to the taxpayers in Londonderry for many years to come. That's the way we've approached TIF districts, is that we look at it as a long-term plan to be able to have long-term taxes. It's very competitive when you're going out and going after certain companies. Sometimes you wanna go after a company like FW Web, because they're an infrastructure company. They're providing the things that everyone needs in the community. In the case of Pratt Whitney, same thing. Airline travel, things that we're going to have for a very long time. We don't just willy-nilly look at saying, hey, let's have a TIF. It's usually because we're getting talks and rumors of people who want to look at this area. And we compete against every other area. Some areas already have infrastructure. So versus them going there to coming here, sometimes you have to compete. The only mechanism we really have in the state of New Hampshire to compete is the tax increment finance district. We don't have a lot of development tools. So with those things in mind, what would you like to do?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one more thing. When I was hired in 2013, there were, well, four of you during my initial interview that talked about one of your top goals was developing Pettingill Road. Because at the time, it was a barren piece of land that had a curb cut, and was cut off by six boulders, despite Ray Resort Drive having been completed two years prior in 2011. And it stayed that way until we developed the TIF district, the first one, in 2014. Pettingill Road was built in 2015. As a person who sat in on hours and hours of negotiations with the landowners and the developers, and John, you were part of many of those meetings, there is no doubt, no doubt in my mind, that but not for that TIF district, it still might not be developed today. It jump-started that entire area into what it is now.
So just as I'm looking up here, the Prologis UPS building, the UPS Pratt Whitney building, is assessed at $45 million. So they're paying us a million dollars a year. We need to generate revenue in our commercial areas. This is a mechanism we can use to do that. Yes?
So, so just one question. So the difference is, you, we had you going out there, or putting feelers out to get, and you were negotiating. Now we have to depend on Pillsbury Realty to do this, or is he gonna allow you to go after businesses for his property?
It's the same thing. It was a partnership between the landowners at Pettingill, myself and the developers. You know, we were all talking. It's no different now. I talk to Pillsbury on a regular basis, uh, but also talk to potential users. I can tell you, we've had at least two high-end users, lots of jobs, that walked because there was no infrastructure there, and, and the cost of simply bringing in all of that infrastructure was cost prohibitive.
Are you saying at Woodmont? I'm sorry.
At Woodmont, yes.
So, yeah, I, but I, that was just a, when you was, when John was saying it, I'm like, okay, well, and you told your little story, and I'm like, okay, well, you're the person doing it.
Yep.
Are they gonna allow you?
Oh, I, I.
Be that?
Absolutely.
Person doing it?
Yep.
I think a lot of times, the, uh, people that are interested in Londonderry are gonna come to the town, town manager anyway, so.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that's usually what happened the past years that I've known, so.
Yeah, and if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, when, when we hired Lisa as the assistant town manager, one of the rationale that we used was that we wanted Kevin and Lisa to be back-to-back. And what I mean by that is Kevin facing outward, focused, a major part of his focus is, uh, development, attracting new business, good quality business to the community. But Lisa facing inward, making sure that we were, we had a good, solid workforce. We had, uh, a good HR department, uh, that minimized our risk, uh, for personnel issues and so forth. So that team is, is still functioning in that way. We're, we're, going forward with, now with Woodmont, Kevin is, is, is working to help identify, uh, businesses in partnership with the landowners, like, like up at Pettingill, to try to find companies. I, I mean, there was some conversation behind the scenes, uh, not in the, not too distant past about Amazon, uh,
I believe.
That's putting a, a fairly large development in Hudson right now, that, that, why, you know, could we have been a candidate for that? So there are, there are things like that, that, you know, very, very high-valued taxpayers, uh, that, that could contribute. We have, we have an expensive school district, uh, as do most New Hampshire towns. And, and the school district doesn't go out and recruit taxpayers. They just spend money. That's not a criticism, that's their role. It's up to us to go out and find taxpayers to help, uh, pay for those things. Uh, and, and I think, I, I have to say, uh, without sounding self-serving, that I think we've done a pretty good job over the past decade or two with finding taxpayers to help keep our, our, our taxes relatively stable. I know that, that they have been creeping up, but, uh, they would have been up, gone up a whole heck of a lot more if we hadn't been able to find these large taxpayers to help, to help with the community.
Well, I hope they're not anymore warehouses, 'cause we can't, we can't, we just can't. I mean, I had hoped, what the master plan had said, and, is that the airport was gonna be a technology park, you know, having high-paying jobs, um, bringing in good new jobs, and really, these things are pretty much automated, and they didn't hire and use a lot of people except for low-end positions. So I hope that this, um, if we have any influence at all, go after something that's really gonna benefit the community.
I mean, high-end manufacturing would be awesome, you know, in terms of both, no, but I'm saying in the area of, for instance, around the airport, in terms of both, uh, job creation as well as tax base, you're gonna get more.
in terms of both job creation as well as tax base, you're going to get more tax revenue out of something like that. I guess the, maybe the one downside of having so much land is it was very attractive for large warehouses like they have up there, you know?
Yeah, I just wish we had did it like our master plan said, which was to have more of mixed use up there. Apartments, you know, affordable housing, office parks, tech parks, biotech parks. It was supposed, you know, and warehouses. It was supposed to be that sort of thing. So I understand what you're doing. I, I, you know, I wish that, I don't think that, I don't think that there's a huge rush for this, but, whatever.
Mr. Chairman, would you accept the motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution 21, 2021-10 as presented tonight.
Second.
Any discussion?
More discussion.
Seeing none, I just did some quick calculations on what's built up there already. There's $160 million in valuation up there now. So seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, resolution carries. Thank you.
I, I wanted to vote no.
Vote.
Roll call vote?
Yep.
I voted no.
Thank you.
I just wanted to wait a little bit longer, but that's okay.
So 4-1. You got to speak a little louder.
I tried to.
And I'm, and I'm not hard to hear.
I tried to, but...
I'm not hard to hear.
Thank you.
Resolution carries, 4-1. Next item for business this evening is acceptance of unanticipated revenue from the New Hampshire Department of Safety, Homeland Security, and Emergency Management. Mr. Campo.
Yes, so the fire department has gone out and got another EMPG grant. This is in order to assist with our emergency operations center. There's a 40% match, which is met in kind by the construction of the emergency operations center at Central Fire Station. One of the requests I do have is if this is passed, that you read the now that, now therefore it be resolved as a requirement of the grant to be in the meeting minutes.
So this is the second EMPG grant that we've received after the construction of Central Fire Station, the first being the emergency generator. The second round that we have gone for, this will be all the equipment to put in the emergency operations center in, for, for the town of Londonderry. The, the match portion of it is basically the construction.
Excuse me. If you're going to have a conversation, please take it outside.
The 50% match is the construction cost of the building. So this will be our second round, and I think we'll probably go for another one later this fall for security, infrastructure, and cameras and stuff like that. So I just wanted to give a special thanks to Lieutenant Waldron. He was the one that drafted this last one for, for this grant here, along with the, our IT department and some of my staff to figure out what we needed for equipment in there, so good stuff.
Questions?
So one other comment. The resolution, the one that's in the agenda, has been altered to the one that I've handed to you now just to focus on the emergency operations center aspect, as that's one of the keys of the grant.
So you're giving me a new resolution?
It's, I believe Kirby gave you the correct one.
Okay.
But the one that I provided in the agenda last Wednesday, it says essentially the Central Fire Station Emergency Operations Center. This one says the Emergency Operations Center at Central Fire. Small difference, mostly cosmetic for the grant.
Any questions from the council?
No.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none. Accept, accept a motion to approve Resolution 2021-13.
So, second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That's a 5-0 vote. Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, gentlemen.
Counselor, if you don't mind, just for the minutes, reading the now therefore be it resolved.
Now therefore it be resolved by the town council in a majority vote. Accept the terms of the emergency management performance grant as presented in the amount of $40,000 for the EOC equipment project. Furthermore, the board acknowledges the total cost of the project will be $80,000, in which the town will be responsible with 50% match, $40,000, which is met in kind through construction costs of emergency manage, emergency operations center, which is located at Central Fire. And hereby, Kevin Smith, town manager, is authorized to sign all documents related to the grant.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution 21-13 as partially read just a minute ago.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Resolution is accepted, 2014. Resolution to relative temporary closure of portion of Memorial Drive. Mr. Malaguti.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mike Malaguti, I'm the assistant town solicitor. I have a request to close a section of Memorial Drive temporarily, and I'm joined by Captain Gandy, who's been spearheading this effort on behalf of the PD. Memorial Drive is a small cul-de-sac off of Delta Drive, and I did provide the council with some, in their materials, with a basic schematic showing Memorial Drive. It's up by the airport, just at the end of the runway. And a recent phenomenon that the, has come to the PD's attention is groups of people gathering for a Fight Club in this area. They're engaging in mutual combat in, in that area. And there's actually a depression, a slight depression, that forms kind of an impromptu fighting ring in the middle of Memorial Drive. They're leaving trash and generating suspicious activity calls to the PD. Captain Gandy has been liaising with the DPW department and, and the airport. He's, he's also been involved in the outreach to the various abutters, and all are working cooperatively towards, towards this end, culminating in a site visit last week. So with the abutters consent, last week, there were some Jersey barriers that were installed by the DPW to block off kind of the, the circular aspect of the cul-de-sac, and that's also depicted in the, in the schematic that I supplied. It should be noted that public access to both properties, primarily to the pet cemetery property, is preserved. And there's actually quite a bit of space there, certainly enough for vehicles to turn around and for an emergency vehicle as well. Now, the council has authority to regulate the use of municipal property, this being a town road, and has a broad authority to regulate the use of public highways. So we're here tonight asking for the council to adopt the resolution that's been supplied, closing the indicated portion of Memorial Drive temporarily, pending a more permanent solution being identified in pursuit. We'd also request the ability to install appropriate signage in that area to include no trespassing sign, signs on the other side of that barrier. Happy to take any of the council's questions.
So, so let me see. During the pandemic, there was this really nice area. People used to go there and watch the sunset, and families had picnics, and somehow a Fight Club was up there.
That's a...
Hey. Can I just ask, perhaps I missed this detail? What, what ages are we talking about here?
The, the ages are anywhere from mid to late teens to early twenties, and sometimes we get folks that are older up there as well, early thirties, participating in these activities.
Is this, is this mixed, if I may?
Yeah.
Is this mixed martial arts type of fighting, or is it street fighting?
Well, the first thing about Fight Club is that we don't talk about Fight Club. So, no, apparently they, they regulate themselves. There's a quasi-referee in the middle. They put on boxing gloves, and they have their own rules of conduct. So, so anyhow, that's kind of the events that have been taking place up there as of the last four or five weekends in a row. Various nights, but mostly weekend nights.
Right.
What are the rules for that, like public fighting?
Again, I cannot speak of the rules of the Fight Club.
No, no, it's the Fight Club, the, the legal rules about publicly fighting.
Well, it's, it's a mutual combat. It's violation, so at best a violation type of offense.
Can you, as officers, arrest these people?
We, we have discretion. If, if it came to a certain, you know, incident that we had to make an arrest because of a safety concern or because of the facts of what was presenting itself to us, most of the time, we would either warn or at the most cite them on scene and then cut them loose. Again, it's, it's mutual combat, it's a violation offense.
Have we had ambulances happen to respond to that?
No, we have not.
Okay, obviously we need a boxing ring.
At 8:39 in the evening, I didn't expect so much discussion on this item.
The other thing that...
You know what I mean? It's, you know, it's, it's...
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Resolution 21, 2021-14.
Second.
Anything further for these gentlemen? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. If I could just publicly thank Mike Malaguti, John Trottier from Public Works on their cooperation and their participation in this, along with the trustees of the cemetery and the airport administration. It's been a unified effort, and I appreciate everybody's work. So thank you, Mike.
Same to you, Chris.
Thank you. All right, so I have approval of May 3rd minutes as presented in our packet. Accept the motion.
So move.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Minutes are approved.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Brian Lockhart from the PFAS committee.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Chair votes affirmative, approved. Thank you, Mr. Lockhart, for your service. Again, this meeting on Thursday is going to be purely virtual? There's not going to be any public?
No, it'll, it'll be virtual. It's been done a couple other time, a couple of other times for other towns. That's hard to say.
Okay, well, we'll see how that goes.
There is a function for a Q and A at the end, so the public can participate.
Interesting. Liaison reports. Have anything new to report from the board?
I, I just wanted to say that the planning board was kind of an interesting planning board. I, I felt that it was hard to make a decision that could have been made, and I, I just, I think it might be coming here. And I just want to see buildings get built and, and put up, and it seemed like it was a little bit just uncomfortable for everyone between the chair and the applicant. It was, it was very uncomfortable meeting, that's all.
Anyone else for liaison reports?
Unfortunately, I missed the town council meeting and the safety road meeting. At the next town council meeting, I will give you an update.
So the PFAS task, task force, I mentioned earlier in the meeting about the briefing later this week. But I just want to publicly acknowledge a lot of the hard work that, that you may not see coming from Lisa Drabek and Bob Carey. They're both helping a lot more than I, than I originally had thought they would, and they're making my life a lot easier. So I just want to acknowledge that mainly to Kevin and to say publicly thank you to them.
I, I, Jim, I did go to your traffic safety meeting. It was a very good meeting. It was, a lot of steps were taken, and they're going to be doing a presentation here, and they're talking about lowering the speed limit throughout the whole town to 30 miles an hour. That was the, one of the big takes on it. And the no-through truck signs.
I'm not sure we can lower throughout the entire town with the state roads.
No, the state roads, only in town.
Just so people understand that. All right, anything else for liaison reports? All right, so, again, it's interesting when people come in and they talk to us, but we need to make sure we have clarifications to statements that are made. $160 million versus zero. Not bad, in, in valuation. So that's $3 million in taxes. That wasn't there before Petengill Road was built.
That would have been on the backs of the residential taxpayer if that wasn't there.
Right, and just so we understand some things, that, that area changed into, changed away from some of the plans you had seen because residential people just weren't interested. No one wants to be under the flight path. So that made it a little bit more challenging. The other thing is, is that I'm getting a number of phone calls, and even got one, got another one today. I'm happy to take the phone calls. The testing done by the state with the PFAs, the calls are coming at the town hall, and then they're finding their way to me, and I'm spending 15 to 20 minutes on the call of each person explaining to them what is, is happening inside of the testing in the town and all the steps we've learned over the last several years. The other thing is, I continue to be asked by the chairpersons of other boards to attend their meetings. I have been doing this a long time. This is unprecedented. So this week, school board, Old Home Day, the PFA one. So I'm, while I appreciate everyone doing their liaisons, I'm not sure how this happened, but I'm up to four to five a week. So do the best you can, bring the information back here, and we'll try to figure out what to do. All right, town manager report.
The only thing I would just like to report is that we do have another Old Home Day meeting scheduled for this Wednesday. It's going to be, we changed the time, it's going to be at 7 o'clock. We have a rotary meeting prior to it, and Ms. Sullivan is being inducted, so we had to move the time to 7 o'clock. The other thing is that the room change, there is a room change, well, it's not a room change, but the room is going to be at the high school because ZBA meets in here on Wednesday. So it's going to be held in House 4, which is near the band area. So you can go in the side doors of the high school where the old gym was, if you remember the old gym, and House 4 is down in there. So unfortunately, Deb, it obviously can't be taped and recorded because it's at the high school. But we can keep copious notes, and if you'd like, we can have someone audio-record it.
That, that would be great, thank you. And like I said, I talked to two people, somebody who's willing to take on all of Home Day and willing to take on Kids Night for next year, and somebody who's willing to take on the parade for you guys, who's done a parade for 20 years, a successful one. So, and they live in town, so that's a good thing, right? Because a lot of people I talked to that came to the meeting in March weren't aware that there was a meeting happening. And so they, they're now all interested again. You remember the people that came, signed up to stuff?
We had let them all know about it, I think, via email, about this first one.
I didn't get an email.
Maybe we didn't capture everyone on the list, then, yeah.
Well, at least they're knowing now. That's kind of why I want to write the story, so that people can see it.
Just think, this time last year, we were all searching for toilet paper.
And, and, and the new owner of Max Farm is working with the Butterfly Garden and has now, is turning over the, the land for us over near Moose Hill Kidney Garden, the big blank pumpkin patch close to the air quality area. We've got that whole section to do with it as we please. So that was nice, he was very nice, and appreciate him stepping up and doing something nice for the community. It was good.
You also?
Mr. Chair, very quickly, the drought update. As you mentioned earlier, the latest map, they come out on Thursdays from the US Drought Monitor. We have actually moved out of drought status, at least for this week's map. So of course, a precondition of the lawn watering ordinance is that we be in drought status. So as of this moment, we are not in drought status. We're in abnormally dry status. So the council had previously indicated its intention or its desire to implement the lowest level of watering restrictions in the ordinance on May 31st. I can't say, of course, I can't predict whether we'll be in drought status by then. We will not have another meeting prior to that date unless there's an emergency meeting, but I would suggest that the ordinance bails us out, if you will, because there is, if you will recall, a provision which allows the town manager or his designee to impose water restrictions in the case of a drought until the next time that we have a town council meeting, and then the council can decide whether to continue those restrictions or not. So we're left in that position as of this moment. I'll continue to monitor it every Thursday when the map comes out. And if the town manager decides to impose the water restrictions, of course, we'll comply with the ordinance with regard to the notice requirements to the residents.
And is that okay with the, I mean, knowing what the council's intent was? If we find ourselves back into a drought beforehand, I'll exercise the authority and the ordinance and...
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
And then if I could, just one other additional update. Leadership Londonderry, we have our graduation on track for this year's class, and we are accepting applications for next year's class with, right now, an application deadline... year's class, uh, with right now an application deadline of June eleventh, and it's right on our website, um, there's a link to the application and you email it to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
And as of tomorrow, we will be dropping the mask mandate here in Town Hall and we'll be posting-
The signs are up.
Courtesy, if you have, if you've been, if you haven't been vaccinated, please wear your mask.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a, a, a wildlife, uh, issue, uh, when you, if, if you would hold, John, could you hold that, that mask up for a second? That mask, if you dispose of that mask, uh, throw it away, uh, it's suggested that you cut the strings, as the wildlife is getting these strings caught around their necks, ducks and birds and other animals and, uh, being injured, so, uh, if you could cut those strings before you throw them in your trash can, it's a, a good thing.
All right.
Aye, aye.
Anything further this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Chairman and council members, I would like to bring to your attention to what I believe to be a violation of the town charter dated March twelfth, nineteen ninety-six by Councilor Deborah Paul, owner of the Londonderry Times. In reference to the charter, Article Six, Conduct of Officials, Section six point two B, Conflict of Interest, it states that any person so financially interested in such matters shall not vote or advise on otherwise participate in town, towns and town councils' consideration of such matters. Ms. Paul, as an appointed member of the council to the planning board, violated the, what I believe violated the town charter during the planning board meet of, meeting of April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This violation occurred during the discussion of a proposed site plan located at Woodmont Commons for nineteen thousand seven hundred ninety-two square foot, two-story medical building for medical, uh, for Dairy Medical Center. Ms. Paul did not recuse herself and partic, and participated in the discussion. The conflict of interest centers around companies associated with this project that have advertised in the Londonderry Times, which is owned by Ms. Paul. The companies in question are the following, Woodmont Commons, Pillsbury Realty Development, Demoulin's Market Basket, Dairy Medical Center, not to mention the companies that are currently located at Woodmont and has a vested interest in the development of Woodmont Commons. Mr. Chairman, a simple question to Councilor Paul, have these companies advertised in the Londonderry Times that she owns and has a financial interest in? This is not the first time that this has been a concern, if my memory serves me correctly, the town attorney has addressed this issue to the board in a public meeting.
Hold on a second, I'm trying to pull the town charter up. Just give me a second here, I need to-
Yeah, take your time.
I need to find out what the process is. Okay, let me see if I understand this correctly. Um, action. Okay, all right, hold on a second. Okay, are, are you just asking a question or are you, are, are, I, I need, in fairness, I, I want to make sure that, you know, I want to know if you are asking a question or are you making, uh, an, is this an allegation or are you asking for an investigation? I'm trying to understand what you're asking for.
Clarification, would I like?
Of course, through, Section three point one four, I, obviously I wasn't prepared for this, um, I mean, if you're asking a question and you feel comfortable answering the question, feel free to answer the question.
I do, because I, I don't know-
I just want to be fair.
No, no, I really don't know what Mr. Butler's hair across his ass is in plain English with me, but the fact is, all of those people advertised with me prior to being a counselor, so that has nothing to do with now, they're not in my paper now, and according to the town attorney, when he litigated me publicly at the town, um, Londonderry High School gym, it was said, is, is, it has to be a continuous advertising source, to run an ad once, to say congratulations to the, to the, um, to the graduates of the class of twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty, is not a continual in-source of cash, and the amount of money that's being made is miniscule, and I'm very forthright about it, and when the Baldwins came up to planning board, I recused myself because at that time, they were advertising, and I got to say, personally, I feel like I go above and beyond checking and non-checking who and when I make comment on things, I try to do the best that I can, and I'm sorry this offends you, Mr. Butler, and I don't know why you keep gunning for me, but-
I'm not trying to gun-
I am not making all this money off of the, off of Dairy, Dairy Medical hasn't advertised with me Dear Lord in like six years.
Okay, yeah.
Pillsbury Realty hasn't advertised with me in two and a half years.
Yeah, but your comments based on the development can spur advertisement in your paper and you-
And they could be, the same could be said for other people on the planning board.
Listen, I, I'm not talking, can spur advertisement in your paper based on your decisions and based on your comments, if they're positive and if on the board's negative-
I think that's a stretch.
It's not a stretch, Jim.
I think it's a stretch, if you want to take me to court, if you want to get a lawyer, if you want to trial me, fine.
I'm not going to take you to court, Deb, all I'm doing is saying, listen, don't violate the town charter, don't violate the town charter, these people have advertised in your paper, you should have recused yourself.
No, I shouldn't have.
Yes, you should have, Deb.
Prove it to me, prove it, Jim.
Well, I'll tell you, okay, you want me to tell you something?
Yeah.
You, you, you voiced your opinion on something that we went to the town attorney to try to get a legal answer for, and it was positive, were you in agreement, were you in agreement with Woodmont when it first came out? No, you weren't.
No, I wasn't, and you know what, I have an open mind about things.
I'll tell you what, I sat there and watched that, I sat there and watched that meeting, Deb, and you were all for a building that didn't fit the, the performance criteria at that time.
And if you actually paid attention to things, Jim, no you don't.
I did pay attention to things.
No, you don't.
Yeah, I did, Deb.
Because you can find tapes of me saying I was for Woodmont, but against the way it happened.
Deb, I don't care about fine tapes, I'm talking about this meeting, April fourteenth, when you should have recused yourself, when you have people that you were talking about making decisions, making decisions on the planning board level, okay, that can advertise in your paper.
If you're pressing something against me.
It's just a conflict of interest.
If you have a thing that you want to put against me, put it-
Oh, please, Deb, I know.
Otherwise, shut up.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
How about if you shut up? I, I'll tell you what, I want it, I want this investigated now, shut up, let's investigate it, let's get it out.
No, I'm doing, I don't care, I did nothing wrong.
I know you don't care, that's part of the problem.
Please, stop. I did nothing wrong. Please, stop. I, well, I'm sorry. Let's, let's keep our-
Oh, here we go, sorry again, poor Deb.
Let's keep our language under control. Well, we interact blindly, you know?
Well, you know, listen, I, I may, may or may, I figured, let's just get this over with-
The professional way to do it would have been broaching me quietly, just the three of us and having a civil conversation, but to be attacked blindsidedly is not professional.
Really, well, you know something, Deb, if you, you're wrong. So, for clarification purposes, three of us can't do something privately.
All right, well then, the town manager, the town attorney.
No, just the way we're doing it now, Deb, just the way we're doing it now.
Fine.
All right, so, so, what you're, what you're saying is, is that you believe there was a conflict of interest in the planning board?
Yeah, I do.
I, I, all right, so, this, so, so, the other three members of the council, do you want to ask the, our town attorney to look at that or do you just want to move forward?
Well, I, don't we have a, a current, um, ethics ordinance that, that has, that has, that, that has a process in it for things like this?
It has a process in it, we also have a process in the charter, the charter process is very formal, right? I think what we have is we have a conflict, you know, what I like to try to do is resolve a conflict, if you would, you know, if, if that's the, if that's the step you'd like me to take, and if, if the, the other two would like me to contact the town attorney and ask him to look at it and give us an opinion back, I'm happy to do that.
I, I think, John, I think for both councils, I think clarity would be important, so, without siding with Jim or without siding with Deb, I think, I think having the attorney, I think having the attorney take a look at it, instructing the town manager to, for the attorney to take a look at it is only fair for both, both parties.
Okay, you okay with that?
Well, I, I, I would say that-
He's going to have to go look at the planning board meeting, what she's referring to, and, and, and then, I, I believe we can meet with, I, I have to ask him what we can do, I don't want to state what we can do because I don't know, so I believe we can, we can get an opinion and perhaps be able to find a way to discuss it, um, if that's, and I'm not asking the other two members, I'm asking Joe and Tom, is that what you want to do? I mean, and I'm okay, we can, we can move forward too, if you've heard enough, I mean, I'm not looking for a big thing here.
I, I guess my input would be that, um, we, we should, as an organization, not pick a path that's going to result in, um, wiffle dust, that we need to pick a path that has this, has an endpoint or a solution to it.
Here, here-
And whatever that path is, uh, you know, if it's, I would not be in favor of just going to the attorney and say, what do you think, and letting him opine, that, I think there needs to be some closure-
So, so let me explain to you-
To the path we pick.
So, let me explain one thing so that all five of you understand this, when it comes to conflicts of interest and disqualification, we put the town at risk if we do that, all right, we, it's a, and, and, you know, people make mistakes, it happens, but if we do that, we put the town at risk, we don't necessarily, you know, we're all indemnified, but the town's at risk, so what I want to do is, is I want to try to see if we can deal with this and move forward, I'm looking for the best path to move forward, it may be, we need to dive further into it, it may be asking the, the, the attorney to have a, um, have a, um, non-meeting with us, to have a discussion about it, if that's appropriate, I need to ask if that's appropriate?
Now, Jim, I don't have enough, sorry. If, when I, can I ask, uh, when you say put the town at risk, are you saying that the applicants at the planning board could come back to the town and ha, and have a, a complaint?
They could, and I don't know if that's even an issue, because I'm not complete, I'm not, I'm not completely familiar-
I always want to understand what you meant by putting the town at risk.
Yeah, I'm not completely familiar with what took place.
Right, does anybody know if the applicants expressed any concern, Jim, did you hear of anything?
No, no.
It's an active plan in front of the planning board.
Correct.
Oh, it still is.
And, and I think we have to have, because we don't have all that information, I think we have to have-
It was a conceptual design, they commented on the, on the look of it.
I, I think we have to have the guidance, right, of people that would be in the know in order to, uh, apply whatever decision we want to make after that guidance to what the, uh, the statute is, 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 says in front of the chairman, because he's, he has the, uh, the wording and how it, we go about this whole process in front of him, we don't, we don't, we have an established cl, clarity as to what the issue is, I mean, we have, we have a statement from Jim and we have a rebuttal from, from Deb, but we got to find out.
I guess if, if we are to engage with the attorney to investigate, it should be, in my view, to include the applicants, to include the planning board, uh, key members and maybe the, the, uh, planning director, just, you know, to get all the parties as to what their points of view are and, and, uh, because I, I mean, if, if there's no issue, if the, if the applicant say, I don't, I didn't care what she said or whatever, then do we, do we have anything, is it more, it just, is it, is this just an exercise or is there an issue of the town being at risk to the chairman's point of view in terms of, uh, an applicant that may, may not feel, uh, satisfied in the process that they participated in?
So for all the reasons you just said, that's why I'm recommending that, uh, we, we instruct the chairman or give the chairman the authority to speak with the town manager and, and go forward with the, the attorney, the attorney, the three of them.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
All right, so, all right, so, I will have a conversation with the town attorney and I will, um, find out what mechanism I can use to report back on what I find out, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, go right ahead.
I mean, you know, I, I-
I know he's already commented on this, so it should be easy and quick.
Well, you know what, what I don't want to do is, is I don't want to continue this, because that's, that's not-
I don't either, I thought it was going along just fine, so I don't know what triggered what, so.
No, fall in line.
Fall in line?
Abide by the rules.
Hey, 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 hey.
Fall in line?
Abide by the rules of the charter.
I am abiding by the rules, Jim.
I don't believe you did.
Not your rules, but my rules.
No, the charter rules, recuse yourself, and you didn't.
You should recuse yourself.
So, so, we all, we all-
I don't own a newspaper.
There's not, there's, all right, so, let's be careful, there's not-
What if you wanted to?
There's not my rules, there's not your rules, there's the town charter and the rules that we follow under the laws of the state of New Hampshire and the constitution of the state of New Hampshire, it's not your way or your way, we follow the rules, we follow the law, that's the way we do things.
And I go out of my way to do that.
Then, all right, so with that, is there anything further this evening? Accept the motion to adjourn.
Some of them, Jim.
All those in favor, sing my by saying aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned, our next meeting is June seventh at, um, seven PM in this room, thank you.